We have the building committee. Andy Marco, Rob Tulis, Mike McCoo, Dan Kowski, Fred Keller, Ron Gantik, Todd Melas, and we can see James Knight. Steve, oh, sorry. It's off Steve Knight and I'm thinking of Jim James Knight. And that's it. So approval of first item on the agenda is approval minutes for the meeting of 11 September 2025. So. Well, this has been made and seconded to approve the minutes of 11 September 2025. Any discussion? No, September 11. Yeah, I'm sorry. I grabbed the way. Any discussion? There are no all favor.
Who seconded? Who seconded?
I said.
You said it's been moved and seconded. Okay, Ron, thanks, Ron.
I'm saying. Prefer to speak. Roll anybody out all names. That's the agenda. Is at something with tonight with bench or is? I don't know.
It's Matt Clark.
Okay. Chairman in. Uh, all right. So mobile business, old business. Bitch and associates draft report continued review and discussion. And I appreciate everybody's comments. They were, they were. Precise and um, right in my opinion and. Ralph had forward to Steve Knight, our consultant. And what should we continue with this? I don't know. But Steve, you want to chime in? I mean, you, you, I don't know, but you didn't have a whole lot of time to review everything. So where minds were headed, I think.
No, I, I, I appreciate it. I got that yesterday and went through it today to the best of my ability. Um, still need a little more follow up on a few items, but if you have about 15 minutes for me to walk through a few things, I think it would be helpful.
Absolutely.
Okay.
Yeah, fire away, please.
Okay, um, let's see. Can someone allow me to share my screen?
Yes, I can do that. It's working. I clicked allow.
Okay, great.
A little slow, I see.
How about that? Can you see that? Okay?
We can. I can. Matt, can you see it?
Yep, I can see it.
Okay. Great. So, uh, you know, obviously going through the feedback, which I appreciate you all taking the time to, to go through that. One of the main tenants, if you will, that we need to kind of iron out is. What level of service is most desirable for, for looking at, at the organizations in, in the town moving forward? So. What I put together was a two station uh, model and a one station model. So let me frame those out just a little bit and I'll, and I'll show you a few. Um, stats just to kind of frame the argument. So if I don't make you too dizzy, I'll try to. Get where I need to go. So. The current performance is. Right around 10 minutes as it stands today. So when we looked at. Originally, we had the two zones, right? For the. Willington Fire Department number one and the Wellington Hill Fire Department. And we had the two zones separated out and we modeled. What it would take for each. Station, what is their level of performance in each zone? And then we backed it out a little bit later and looked at. The entirety of the town uh, as a single jurisdiction. What I wanted to show here is, is that on each zone, if you will. Right around that 90th percentile could be accomplished by the existing uh, by a single station, I should say, in each of the zones. So for Wellington. Hill, for example, they're right around 86%. And you can see all of the green is the coverage area um, from that station. So. If I go to. The other station. Nope, not that one. At 10 minutes. Um, that's optimized. Hold on. So when I look at the Wellington Fire Department number one and the, and the 213 location. Their single station can cover 96% and the 213 really didn't have much uh, remaining coverage area that wasn't already captured in the 10%. I mean, in the, in the 90%. So you can see in 10 minutes. Uh, and I can make this a little smaller so you can see the totality of the graph. Um, but it's, it's got a pretty good coverage, right? So what that tells us is. If you left each zone and each department dependent. You could manage to continue to maintain a 10 minute response time. So that's, that's one lens to look at it from that perspective. If we go to. An optimized location, because I know this is one of the comments. And what the optimized is for us is we look at. We look at. Putting a station. Let me go back to the. Close your eyes for a second. I'll go back to this. Uh, table of contents, but with the optimized locations, what we're really testing is. You know, if it was a whiteboard approach, let the computer decide what would be the best location. Uh, and then we. Go ahead and say, okay, if we built a new station in a new location, what advantage does that give us? So looking at that. It would give us almost 93% coverage for the entirety. Of the town jurisdiction from a single new location. So there's, there's, the data suggests that you could maintain current performance with a single location. If you wanted to maintain two separate stations. Then that's fine. Um, you know, we certainly don't have. Any staked out position on this. It's really comes down to. What's the fiscal impact or the fiscal consideration of? Of having to maintain or refurb or rebuild multiple stations as it relates to your performance. So overall, you can maintain where you're at through a single location. And then when we looked at it also, just to, you know, try to use uh, multiple lenses on that. When we updated it past our last conversation um. With. Let me find that one. With the church property. We broke that out at the 10 minute mark. And the, the W270 is, is the, is the backside uh, location for it to. Uh, be able to ac- access the, the turnpike side. But when you look at it here, uh, again, you're right at 89% from the, the church property location. And then when we tested it, when we forced FD1 in there, it came out nearly identical. So. Whether you use the church property as a single location, or you used FD1 as a single location, both of those had pretty mirrored performance. What would give the church location? A nod from the operational lens is. That from an ISO perspective, it covers more of the geography within five miles, which is a consideration for ISO. So that is the only distinction between the two locations. So. Where that really lands us is. If you were. If a single station. If a single location, station configuration. Had any merit and resonated with you, then you've got a couple options. You. Can see which of the facilities that are, that you already have. Between the church location, the renovation that's going to be. That would have to be done there, looking at FD1 and the renovations that would have to be there. Versus purchasing property and building a centralized uh, location that would still merit that 10 minutes. So you kind of have a wide lane. What? The driving force from our perspective for putting an alternative of a single location in front of you. Is purely from the fiscal standpoint, right? Because like right now, when I went through and we looked at all of the age of your apparatus, etc. Um, following the NFP standards and using a 25 year threshold, uh, five of the 10 of the major apparatus, I'm not talking about the service vehicles or anything. But five of the 10 major apparatus could be pulled off of the, of the chessboard, if you will, and you would cost avoid having to replace those. You could follow your current schedule for four of those. And then likely you'll have to, one of our recommendations is to purchase a new uh, engine, multi-purpose engine. Uh, that the departments, you know, thought would serve them best for their condition. So. So you have the cost avoidance on the mobile apparatus and you'll have some cost avoidance from having to refurb. Uh, or build one station versus two. So that's where we were trying to drive the discussion point and that'll help us refine um, what. What you would need to do as you move forward. Does that make sense?
Yeah, so I have a question. Steve, on this chart that you have on the screen?
Yes, sir.
The four stations listed in rank there are, is that additive as you go down the chart? So. The W270, which is the 270 Talon Turnpike. And then if you move to rank two, you have WFD1. Are you adding them together to get that 96.91% capture? Or are those? You are, okay. That's additive, which is why the total capture goes from 660 to 722.
Right.
Right. Okay. And then 60 equals what? What's that unit?
What's that?
What is the unit 660? 660 what?
No, 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 that's, that's how many calls. That's how, that's how calls could be captured within 10 minutes.
Gotcha, gotcha. Okay.
Okay. And then don't. We just left it in here because it was on the mapping, but because we combined the two different addresses, we just ran them separately. But really what this shows is that you would. You would be bumping up right around 90% uh, when we look at it just singularly with, you know, both access points.
Okay. The one and four together gets you the two driveways from that problem.
Yes, sir.
Okay, alright.
Right. And that's, that's what the mapping looks like on that. And again, the 213 just doesn't, just doesn't typically resonate in the, in the scenarios. And then I can also show you. If I go to 47.
Steve, can I ask you a question? When you let the computer decide where to put a single station. Where was that geoc- geographically?
Oh, well, I'll go back to it in just a minute. Um, and you can kind of see, but I'll ha- I'd have to get the XY and pull up an address for you.
I tried to zoom in on that because it's hard to see the colors in it, but I think it's right where 320 north meets 74. Like basically where the library is. Which isn't so my guess for West Service Center wasn't too far off.
Yeah, well, either direction. The church property or.
Yeah, it's a.
Right. Yeah. So it, it really just comes down to. You know, getting your, getting your architecture engineers and saying, okay, what is? What is it going to cost in this scenario versus that scenario? Uh, because operationally, they'll all be pretty similar. Um, and then this one, I just wanted to show you, we did at the 10 minutes also look at your neighboring stations. Um. So we used a Mansfield and the, was it Stafford, I believe, and. From FD1 station, and again, those are pretty interchangeable, but FD1 station came up first in this analysis. And then the Mansfield 207 would bump you up to 95% coverage. Uh, and you can see uh, what that looks like here. I'll make it a little smaller so you can see all of it. So again, we looked at it from a bunch of different directions to try to test the theories. Of what station configuration would serve you best. So. The, the prime question we have for you is. Is whether or not 10 minutes is acceptable. And if 10 minutes as a travel time is still acceptable, because that's pretty much what you're doing today. Then the conversation comes in to, do you see value in reducing your capital liabilities by having a single location?
Steve, the, the 10 minutes that you're getting as an average, that's off of our response times now? Is that correct?
It's off of your road networks, your road impedance.
Okay.
But this, if I'm wrong, the 10 minute. It's travel time, so that's.
Yes.
That's, that's a person in the seat. Driving from the firehouse to the incident, correct?
Yes, sir.
So.
That's after turnout.
Yeah. Did you do an analysis of?
Hmm.
Um, the time of call. The time, the, the tones went out. For the call to.
I won't make you dizzy. I'll come back to this. Hold on one second. I'll try to be fast.
Well, so I was getting it. I just wanted to make sure it wasn't our current response times, because that'll. Like what our actual response times are, because that's music coming out of that station.
No.
It's, it's not.
It's just road time.
Yeah, so that's why I asked. I, I, I think it's a, a data point. That is a reality is, is. The time of call compared to when the apparatus is getting on the air on average.
Which we have in the GIS report, which shows. Which shows the differences, particularly where you have paid staffing, your, your time onto the air goes a lot faster.
So I, and you know, you want to, you gotta be very careful here because you, you, you could end up. Inadvertently providing misleading information. So if the time I call 911, someone's gonna be at my house within 10 minutes, that's awesome. That is not true at all. That's not even remotely accurate.
It's, so it's how we title the data to make sure it's clear what that data is.
Right. Not a response time. It's a travel time.
It's travel time. Once you have a button.
Station is from station travel time.
Yeah. So, so the, the, the data points, you know, the, from time of call versus. The time someone's responding and then travel time is certainly appropriate, but if you had a 20, if you had both firehouses were 24/7 paid. That travel time would, would, would be a, a, in my opinion, a more valid argument. Right now, it doesn't.
Only have to add.
Travel time doesn't mean anything because you still have 10 minutes to get to, in some cases, to get to the scene.
It isn't that it doesn't mean anything. It's still, is still a data point for where is the resource to the need, except what's missing is. Is the resource staffed or not?
Or does, or does the resource even go?
Well, because, because it may not go if it's not staffed.
It may not go if no volunteers go to get it.
Right. Which is static.
So if. If I could jump in. What you're looking at is what we broke out. With the updated dispatch times. What we broke out by the township level with everything combined. With WFD1 and um, the. Wellington Hill, right? So. What it shows is on the travel time, you can see the drift here. Overall, by the, by the town level jurisdiction, you're right under 10. You're at 10 and a half for FD1 and. Excuse me, Wellington uh, Hill is at 8.1, but again, that's only for the calls that they've responded to, right? So. But what this tells us is, to your point. The citizen's experience is this column, right? That's from the time that they called 911 until someone arrives, right? So that's right around. 15.4 minutes uh, overall, 16 minutes and 16.3, so not, not a huge difference uh, there, you know, across the two zones. But. While, while the conversation is spot on to make sure that we're articulating to the public exactly what the measure is. I think from a scaffolding standpoint in our report. Understanding that volunteerism continues to be a challenge. We're trying to build a future facing recommendation where additional staffing in the future is probably going to be recommended, right? So if you're staffing the location, and, and this goes back to all of our previous GIS, right? Yes, there's going to be some difference in this, but for the standpoint, let's just use EMS and we'll, we'll. Just use EMS for the illustrative purpose. But as long as you've got a staffed resource and you're at the, one of the locations that we've proven can do it in 10 minutes. Then as long as those resources are staffed, a single location will get there in 10 minutes. So you, it's comfortable to say that this is a reasonable approach, right? And then the turnout time is going to be a lot better, you know, with the staffed resource, of course, because this is going to be. Uh, inflated with, with the volunteer component of that. So. Um, so you're, you're still in a good position to reliably talk about it in a 10 minute travel time through the lens that it would be staffed.
Well, that's an important data point for the public to remember that. If, if, if a, a late person was sitting and listening to this or watching this presentation, they would walk away thinking that from the time I called 911. The time a resource arrives at my house is 10 minutes. And that's, that's just not accurate.
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
You, do you have? Like. When. The call comes out, you have. Um, uh, on the scene.
Yes.
Hmm.
Right? So you have a, you know. Some volunteer lives on the street, he's on the scene because he's on the job. Is that data point there?
Yeah. So from the time a call to the first arriving unit and apparatus gets.
Well, apparatus can follow, but.
Person, yeah.
Person shows up, we're there to at least start assessing everything.
Yeah, as long, as long as they're in communication with the dispatcher, they're a, what we call a radio call. But yes, absolutely.
I don't think that that, that person though, I don't think that's tracked in any of this data, is it?
It's just apparatus at all.
It's just like apparatus.
People that have radios that are in communication with the dispatcher. And so a, a volunteer EMT doesn't have a radio.
Right, yeah. So I mean, so I mean. Volunteers are important. Very important to especially small community. That. When the call goes out. Whoever it is, they, they go direct. They don't go to the firehouse to go direct.
Some people do because.
Because it's there, yeah.
Absolutely.
And.
So Steve, in, in more generic, in sort of generic. Basic term, not, not Wellington specific.
Hmm.
We always have an opportunity, if you take a station from all volunteer to adding a paid staff person. You're going to immediately, you're not going to change the travel time, but you will obviously immediately shorten up the turnout time. Because you have, you have someone essentially guaranteed to be in the station. So looking at it from that way. Adding staffing will only improve if we, if the townspeople said, well, we really want to see an option that improves. Travel time, right? Or it shortens the time that someone arrives at our house.
Right.
Because the townspeople look at it from the time they call 911 till the time a service arrives. Right? If, if townspeople say, we're willing to spend some money to improve that. Then that's the other part of this conversation, right? That's what we talk about. We, the only way to improve that. Is. Having, because we already have paid staffing at one location, we would have to put paid staffing at a second location so that you would now. Break the town almost. Into areas. In other words, you, you'd be responding from two areas at once. Geographically, you'd be responding from two locations, right? So you would all of a sudden cut down. Like for EMS right now. That's different than fire. EMS is responding from a single location, even if we had 10 fire stations in town. EMS is responding from one location where the ambulance is.
Right.
Right? So if you had two ambulances in two different places in town, or an ambulance and an EMS unit, whatever you want to call it. If you have, if you have a paid resource, you all of a sudden take EMS from responding from a single location to two locations.
Yes.
Right? So you would immediately drop response time.
Yes, you would definitely drop response time. It, but again, you would have to, if you think about those maps, right? You would have to pick a different location for your second station than what exists today, because there's too much overlap. In, within that. That arc, right? So you, you would want to place something maybe in the southwest or southeast, something, something along those lines to separate them. A little bit, or you won't get the same return investment in your description.
Well, you would get a lot of overlap for sure. Anything in between the two stations geographically is overlap, but you would add in the opposite direction, right? You would add, if you, if you put an ambulance at the Willing- the current Wellington Hill location, all of a sudden your response time to. The senior housing down here becomes one minute. Whereas right now, the ambulance is coming from South Wellington. And it has whatever, a six minute or seven minute travel time. You all of a sudden have a one minute travel time from. Old Farms Road to Old Farms Road. So that's what I'm wondering is, is there an option we can present to the people that says, if you're willing to pay for it? This will. Shorten EMS response. To whatever number that is, from 10 minutes to six minutes or 10 minutes to eight minutes or whatever.
I mean, do you think that has something?
Can you pull the chart back up, Steve, please?
Oh, okay. Hold on, I was switching gears there for a second. Hold on.
You allow it, Jen.
What? Oh, that's.
We're gonna get it so it beeps again, then one.
Do they used to?
It used to, it used to beep when someone came into the waiting.
Sorry, Jen. We can help you a question, too. Alright, uh, help me understand this. I'm looking at, I see the combined up top, there's three, three rows. I see this, first off, the top, the middle one is Wellington Fire Department. 11, 2, 10, 9, 8, 5. Wellington Hill is 11, 5. So that's what? Well, it's. It's 30 seconds. I mean, 11.2, I mean, the response times are almost the same for EMS, but now you say the EMS really only comes out of one place. So.
I don't, sample size is different.
The sample size.
Well, the, also, but if the, if the other unit responded and went as a first responder, when they hit on scene, it would stop the clock.
Oh, right. I don't have to explain that.
Like they're getting there, like is it saying that, okay, so someone from Wellington Hill arrives on an EMS call, it stops the clock, but they have an ambulance or anything?
Alright, so that's credible data, just because they're almost the same. So the staff, the staff location. Is second different than the unstaffed location. Is that correct?
Because travel time is only geography, right?
Right. This is response time, that's the total between dispatch. This includes turnout time, right? Isn't that the? Because in the far right column is the total.
Yep.
So that's, I don't, 11, 2 to 11, 5 and alright, 8, 5 for rescue for the staffed and 10, 7, so a couple of two minutes.
Right.
And a half.
So let me. No, it's not, but, but let me, let me try to frame it differently, right?
Okay.
Since, since we looked at all the GIS and we showed that either one of those locations could cover 90% of the calls in the entirety of the town. Jurisdiction in 10 minutes, that's why this data is, is looking the way it is.
Yeah, that's, that's right. Just want to make sure I understood the. One, but the numbers that I'm looking at. I would have expected to see a greater disparity between the staff and the unstaffed location than. A minute and a half. I mean, I think it's a great thing. I just would have expected to see something greater than a minute and a half.
Well, and that one was. That was the average. Uh, sorry to interrupt. That was the average. The 90th percentile is a lot more sensitive to the difference.
No, but I mean, it's still an indicator that.
Yep.
It's not a huge difference. Unless you're having a heart attack.
Well, then you're outside, then you're outside that window of.
You're outside.
You're outside the window anyway.
No, I'm not, and that's why I asked a question. That's what I'm saying. So then we're questioning by the time. I'm not asking any one or the other. I'm just saying, I would. No, 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 I, I, I know what you're saying. And, but then I say. So where do you go? Paid staff is at two locations.
You need paid staff at like 30 locations to have numbers.
Right, so it, so, and then volunteerism is dropping down. So. Everything I've read shows in the future, it'll probably be paid staff or ghost staff. Unfortunately. Right. In another 10 or 15 years. Whatever, maybe less than. Well, unless you can promote something for more volunteers. You want to volunteer next to your house when you're having a heart attack, you know, so it comes square. Yes, I do. Though I certainly do. Yeah. Uh, yeah.
So, coming back to. So, coming back to this, under the guise of speeding things up, right, of of having a quicker travel time. These two locations here.
You're not.
What's that?
You're not screen sharing right now.
Oh, I'm sorry, okay, let me try to.
He's gonna make us guess.
Yeah. There, sorry about that. So that's nine minutes at the ninetieth percentile. Right, so you're really only talking about improvement of about one minute. So that's a consideration. For the fiscal spend of the multiple locations, right? That's why driving. What what travel time, what configuration you're looking for. Is vitally important to etching out your, you know, one or two page, you know, straight to the point. Implementation that you requested, right? So we just need to know where you want to land.
So the locations again for the, because the map is down low there, the locations that gives you the nine minute is. The station. It's the station thirteen and station forty nine locations, right? The two red ones.
Yep, yes, sir.
Okay. And so the the station two thirteen, it's in black, that is not counted in the nine minute.
Right, because you can see in the green, it's already covered within nine.
Covered by the other two stations, okay.
Right.
So.
That's so from.
Say, what two stations give us, what two station gives us is a one minute improvement, basically. That's the comparison.
In in those locations, yes.
Right, in travel time.
In travel time.
Right.
Right.
Right. But presumably, since travel time is part of response time. It will improve the overall time presumably by a minute.
You're right.
They're right. Yes, there's a million variables here. How many volunteers are coming, where they're coming from?
Is anybody going?
Right, but historical information. Is showing, right, is anyone going, right?
Steve, I don't remember seeing it in there. Say we wiped both stations off the map, is there two places, one place that's? I think there was an optimized two station, wasn't there?
Yep. Let me go back.
Right, that's what you're asking, yeah, let the computer pick the two locations.
Where where were the two best places in town? I were going through this now, it's.
I think when Dollar General goes on business, that might be a bad spot, two station.
We said that before they built it.
Put doors right there, yeah. I don't see why, it's so pretty.
Yeah.
They sell, they make a lot of ten dollar sales all day long.
Okay, so so if you picked new locations, right, like these. You could get to eight minutes, which is a two minute improvement, if you pick two new locations.
Exactly, I'll tell you. One of them is at Love's Truck Stop, basically, right here.
That's Love's.
Yep, and this one is at Dollar General, right?
General.
Thirty two and seventy four and.
FedEx. Down in the valley, and if you go any lower, you're in the floodplain.
Yeah.
Or you're in town. At each end of the town, that's sort of.
Yeah.
Well, because because you have this ability right here to cross the highway and cover this section.
Sure.
Back there, you have you have quick access coming this way. And then from here, you have Route seventy four, thirty two in these directions, so you have a lot of quick access to this area.
I mean, the the big, the the biggest difference really is the location of, well, presumably. Well, yeah. Versus, I mean. Downward Dollar General, the Dollar General, cut it down there.
Yeah.
I mean, that's a split half mile, three quarters of a mile from the existing firehouse.
Not even.
And so that's not, that's not that far out of whack. The one down, one up there.
Yeah, what was it, three seventy seven or some two seven? Three seventy seven, where they were, two seventy seven was on the original thing.
Um, did it land up?
Steve, there isn't any chance. You did not include the uh EMS calls to union in this, right? To out of town, right? So that's not getting, no mutually, no mutually. Well, I know we can debate whether it's mutual aid or not, but.
Be bounded by the geography for this analysis, so. Um, in the workload in the data report, certainly we consider your work, but here, we're just bound it to the geography of the town.
Yeah, okay.
So one of the considerations about this, though, because I just want to plant the seed, that's why this conversation's so helpful. If you were still going to have a staff station and a volunteer station. Then this probably wouldn't serve you well, because it's not as centralized, whichever station you decided to staff would not be as centralized as as they are today. So if you were to choose a configuration like this, you probably should anticipate staffing them.
Right, because volunteers are going to have to drive longer travel time to get to a station and maybe less likely to even respond if the station's that far away.
Right, well, this is more, I I know it's only two stations, but it's more of a system approach, right? They're relying on each other to cover the geography in eight minutes. If you only staffed one of these, you likely would be worse off than you are today with a more central station.
Right. Right. Uh unless you are a one consolidated firefighting unit. Then. People will be able to go to the closest station and.
Correct, well.
You still only have one, if you're only still having one ambulance, if we're talking about EMS calls, there's still only one actual apparatus.
Oh, yeah, I mean, when people want EMS call, I look at it a little bit differently, most people think of EMS as it's just the ambulance, I I look at it as having somebody with. EMT skills on the scene.
Well, and that was my point earlier about, do you add a staff to the other station? And now we start really shortening our response time to get to people.
I look at it as the ambulance just being the transport part of it. You know, there's, the people that are coming on the ambulance are the same level of of qualification as an EMT coming, a volunteer EMT coming to the.
Right, I guess.
So as long as they have some equipment to get there.
Yeah, oxygen, defib, you know, basics, um.
So the the single organization comment, Tyler, I think the key is that we try to look at this, since everything gets toned together. We try to look at this as sort of one responding department, right? I mean, the key is where are the, like, you have some volunteers, we have some volunteers. They're going to come. Any call, they're both getting called for it.
Yeah. But it's it's a little bit more of a, I guess, more of a of a equitable, lack of a better phrase, distribution of volunteer personnel. As example, there's three nights that live down a half mile from Wellington's one section. That if it was one combined organization, they would come there to get the apparatus.
Oh, right, right.
Where you may, we may have some people live in the Hills District that, if you're one unit, they may go to the Hills Station.
Right.
For, for a Hill Station, you know what I mean?
Right.
So you have, you have more of a distribution of your of your manpower. Under one consolidated unit, which. Just don't see.
Yeah, I mean, a couple of times I, a couple of times way back, I think I even took an engine from down in the village. When you used to have the paid staffing up at the old station.
Absolutely, I would use to.
Yeah.
Yeah, absolutely.
Yeah, I took the old EZ two thirteen a couple of times.
Yep, that's good. Sure, uh, what do I do? Matt?
Yeah, I just had a question, I haven't, I haven't looked at the report, obviously, but um. Does does your report include um comparisons to benchmarks? Um, so right now, it seems the analysis is between stations. One station versus two stations, centralized versus where they are now. But does it include comparisons to Connecticut and then comparisons to rural in Connecticut? Um, because that's really, I think, an important analysis to understand when making these kinds of decisions. Are we delivering a similar service at a similar quality level on a similar response time as other taxpayers in Connecticut are getting? And then what are we paying and what are they paying? Thanks.
Yeah, absolutely, I I. I'll fall short on on part of that, right? Trying to discern who's paying what is is a. An analysis we usually try to slip past because. Each community is different from their policy lens, right? We've been a very, very affluent communities that spent very little on public safety. And then we've been at at communities that are socioeconomically more challenged and spent heavily uh in public safety, so. That's, we don't really use that from our firm as a as a great balance and benchmark. What I can say is from our experience um in Connecticut and around the country, a community with your. Population and geography, your response time capabilities today are pretty well in line with what we see. Um, if you were to use, I mean, you could look at seventeen twenty as a combination department. You know, you're going to be, uh, they measure that at the eightieth percentile, we didn't tease that out specifically, but you're probably fairly close. Uh, when you combine those two. And then the fire accreditation model, just as a guidepost, uh for rural communities, which you would qualify for. They have a thirteen minute travel time at the ninetieth percentile, right? And we only stretch it out to eleven. So if you guys want to look at elongating the response time, we certainly can do that. But most, most policy groups look to either maintain or improve, uh rather than, rather than relax the. The response time, but that's entirely a local policy choice for you all, so if you want us to. Move it back to thirteen minutes and and test it, we certainly can.
We have to move the station out of the town though, because we've already proved that even with one station, we can cover it in ten minutes from from more than one place.
Yeah.
That, that graphic that's up now of the the computer selected station location, is that, give us nine minutes, eight minutes, what does that give us?
This one is eight, this one in particular is eight. Ninety point six percent in eight minutes.
Hey, what is possible?
It's wild that that.
Yeah.
That that location somehow gives a two minute improvement.
Yeah, it is.
Because it's the roads. The Dollar General, what is it, it's three quarters of a mile away from the existing location, which is weird. Yours is drastic, I mean, it's huge.
Would it be wise to put the total response time next to the travel time on the map?
Because that's.
I think, I think that is, we know those numbers, I think that's an easier thing for us to do, like.
Well, just because if everybody starts looking at it and see the two numbers.
There are charts, there are charts that show that in here.
Yeah.
They show each of them and the total.
Okay, it is some, but is it, is it on the map?
No, well, it's in the charts with the maps.
The other chart with the map, sorry.
Well, it's a way to make that more clear.
So I thought I just. If Steve scrolls, I think, doesn't it show response time, by the travel time rather?
Yeah.
Just the travel time. Just the travel time. Right?
Yeah, that's all.
Yeah, it's right there, but I wonder if response time is a number that would resonate more directly with. The ultimate decision makers.
Well, and you can't put, I don't think you could figure out what to use for total response time on optimized locations. Because we don't know how the.
You don't know.
We don't know where the people are coming from, who are going to staff.
For optimized locations, that's probably right, for a new location.
We only can you look at historically in our current locations, how long is it taking for volunteers to fill it, because we know paid staff are going to be on the air quickly.
I think he's right, if you were to do this optimized, you need people on that second station.
Probably stop in both stations.
Stop in both stations.
Right. So then the ask is two new stations and multiple staffing.
Yeah, yeah, all right, that's a, that's a big ask.
Very large ask.
Big ask.
Two buildings.
Well, I guess, though, we're going to explain it, then we have to make sure people understand. Exactly this conversation, right? That there is a gap of, of, um. What did you call?
So basically. With the optimized, the graphics of the optimized station locations. And it gets you uh and gets you eight minutes. The existing. Locations, two locations, gets you nine minutes. A single location.
Keeps you at ten minutes where we are now.
Right.
Yeah, so, so why would we, why, I guess the question would be is to kind of summarize it. It sounds like the two station model was, was best, we won't talk in a minute, but I guess that's the.
So. Well, you know what, so to go along with that, Tyler, and this is my feeling, and I I know who anyone who read the comments might pick up on this. If we can add, if we can pick up some time. And we can also. Think, try to use the crystal ball about what does the future of Wellington look like? Two stations is safer than one.
Sure.
Because if development in the north end of town with all those big pieces of the land turns into a bunch of housing developments. Then all of a sudden, our data, our our need is going to start drifting northward. If the South Wellington Village concept that's been worked on with EDC and zoning. Gets traction, then the need is going to draw down to the southwest corner near the Mansfield Line on Route thirty two. So any of those single station options doesn't help us get closer to those areas.
We face a popping up a substation somewhere.
Then having to go back to two stations, right?
Right, that's why you already have locations, you already have land, you already have locations, if you will. Um, I guess in my mind, I'm trying to think about things we can kind of. Get off our, our checklist here.
Well, I I see this, that's just a simple, I present all of this to the public. And show them exactly what all the, and I think it's a fairly good conversation, because the options.
And and.
Regardless of the option, our response time is still.
I am not an advocate by any means of keeping anything from the public, everybody should be absolutely, they should be open. However, from a recommendation perspective out of this group, there.
They need to get down to like two.
Well, yeah, we do.
We need to get down to like two recommend.
They absolutely do. Someone's going to say, well, you have this committee for, you know, fifteen years that worked on this.
Yeah, 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 no, we have to recommend self-credit, but now we're getting the data to do that, and I'm.
I think that, you know. The the two station model, for a multitude of reasons, including what Mike just said, I think makes sense. Um, I I still, you know, me personally, Steve, you saw my comments, I think there has to be a bigger discussion about. You know, does a group recommend a combined workforce instead of two separate, distinctly separate organizations of two separate leaderships? We we have to have a talk, a discussion on that, and I'm curious what Steve thinks about that.
Yeah, I I think, I mean, I can, I can parrot the conversation I overheard from you two a few minutes ago, I think you're spot on. Um, even with the two locations, if it was a singular entity, even even if it's just functionally consolidated. But all of your, all of your resources, personnel, etc., were fluid, you're going to be in a better position.
Yeah, yeah, occasionally available personnel to the closest station.
Yeah, because I drive from South Wellington all the way up through Wellington up to Old Farm Road, right?
I mean, it it just, it just makes, it always has, but it just makes too much sense.
Yep. Yeah, and that's, that's a. That's really a pretty easy lift for you all, uh to move in that direction, right? Um, so I I did put, I I did try to tease out a little bit for you.
Yeah, on on paper, it should be extremely easy. As far as execution in a small town, northeast, good luck with that.
Yeah. There, listen, Steve, you know, there are hundreds of fire departments that are going down in flames in Pennsylvania right now.
Yes.
Because, because that's how it's going to be.
Hundred, hundred years of tradition, underpinned by any type of progress whatsoever.
That's right.
Well, I, before I share this screen, I do just want to go back and make sure that. That I I successfully made the point. Is that if you think of an implementation timeline for what you want the fire department to look at, right? Or look like. If you're going to staff only one of the stations and you want to maintain the performance that you have today. Then you need to deploy from either a centrally optimized station or one of your two locations that you have today. Right, that way, your staffed resource will maintain the current performance. If you stretch the community out to the north and south, or northeast and south, like the optimized two station eight minute. And you only staff one of those, you'll you'll likely have a longer response time. Overall, from the staff station, so you just have to think, you know, almost like playing chess, like how quickly are you going to get to two staffed? Stations. And whether or not, you know, that's a consideration for you. Um, as you invest, because you know, if you build new stations, those are typically fifty, fifty year old lifespans, right? So you want to think strategically about where you want to be later. Is that fair?
There's talks now of having to, you know, potentially put a third person on, especially during the day up here in Hill. Just for responses. Um, but those talks happen.
Those have been happening often, I doubt years, right?
Yeah.
Um, it should have.
I don't disagree. I don't disagree, we we should be our own person.
She and I have talked about that a lot.
Okay.
But you never asked the board of finance for it.
Not yet.
Um. Because we're getting appointments, isn't it?
So.
Huh, is that the time I ask?
Hey, Matt, did you get your question answered?
No, not not really, um, i- i- is that data in the report, um, the comparison to Connecticut, Connecticut? Connecticut, um, suburban in Connecticut to rural, in terms of response times, or, or is that something you're not gonna provide?
Well, I, I don't think we're willing to. Steve said it's in concert with, with most standards, national, you know, world standards and his comparisons, and. We're not willing to, we're not willing to change the res. To increase the response time, the only option is to, um, maintain or make it better. Or make it better or maintain it, and that's really the only metric, uh.
Yeah, I don't, I'm not, I'm not advocating anything, I'm just saying, I'd like to see the data, that's all, I, I don't. I have no opinion whatsoever, I just like to see the data, that's all.
I don't think that comparing, I don't think that was one of the things we asked for.
It's not the scope of the work.
It's not, so that's like.
For it, but.
Yeah, it wasn't.
Yeah, in the scope of work, we asked for comparison to the nationals, the national guidance, which is what has been provided.
Yeah.
Yep.
Yeah.
I think that part's been fulfilled.
It's a great question though, Matt. Can I ask one more question about the apparatus stuff, because you touched on it quickly? Matt, or not Matt, I'm sorry, Steve.
Yes, sir.
The apparatus, you had said if we went to the single, we could drop some. What was the analysis for the analysis? Because we get asked that all the time, if we, should we be running one, two, three, five?
Okay, sure, let me, um. Go to that screen. And I'll make this bigger so you can see. Is that okay?
Yeah.
Yeah, I totally understand this graph, so I'm glad we're gonna talk about it.
Yes, well, absolutely, un- unfortunately, just, just we zigged and zagged on communications, usually I like to present this. All before everybody weighs in on it, so we're all on the same page. Um, but it, it's fine, so sorry about the confusion, I'll, I'll explain it now. This is a staffing to demand, uh, analysis that we look at, and all of these, if you can see all these yellow peaks and valleys. That's Sunday, Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, all the way through Saturday, across the bottom. So that's your, that's your average hourly demand by day of week. The blue area, all of this blue area, the light blue. Is the geographic requirement that you need to cover, whether it's one stations, two stations, three stations, et cetera. In this top graph, it's one station. So when you combine your geographic commitment. And your average hourly demand, including your time on task for the calls that you run. Um, you can see your staffing of one staffed resource. Is, is a little challenged, right? You, you're, your demand for resources and your response time. Uh, is a little bit above your staffing line, but it's not hugely above the staffing line, so it's reasonable. And, and you would have to define this as a policy group, but it's reasonable. In a very lean operation to say, okay, the times that I'm, I'm challenged to take that call. I can rely on mutual aid or the volunteers are, you know, responding in because I had an all-call or whatever the scenario is. So if, if you're from a risk perspective. You're okay to weather that little bit of vulnerability that you have on top of your staffed resources. I think you have a pretty, a pretty fair assessment to say, okay, we're, we're in the right lane. And I can say that with some confidence, because when we looked at simultaneous events, so those are times. When you were out on a call and a second call or more came in, that was less than ten percent of the time. So there's nothing scientific about that, that's a policy choice. But if, if you're managing your risk, to say only ten percent of the time am I challenged on my resource, most of the time. Uh, I'm, I'm doing pretty good, then this is a reasonable, uh, look. If it's not reasonable to you, then you would probably need to add. At least a second day truck, uh, another ambulance during the day, uh, in order to, to round out these little peaks and valleys. Uh, for each of the day. Does that make sense?
Good.
Okay.
So that's, that chart is just EMS?
No, 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 it, it's just, I know that that's a lion's share of your calls.
Yeah.
Um, yeah, but no, it's all.
That chart is all calls.
All calls.
Staffing demand for all calls.
Yes.
Gotcha, okay.
So if you have two stations, and this is a nine-minute example, right, from your two stations, you could get to nine minutes. Then you would have to have another resource anyway. Um, to your point, you would have to have a second resource in order to cover that demand. And then you would still be relying on mutual aid and volunteers to, to take that. Uh, that second call if you had two staff stations, so. What that tells us is, if, if you're heading to two units anyway. Then it's only the fiscal consideration of the cost of the station, because your personnel costs are gonna be sunk. Does that make sense?
Yep. I got it.
Can you say it again, please?
Yes, so, so. Again, if, if you're sensitive to the vulnerability that, hey, we're challenged through the peak of the day. Um, to handle these calls, it's just not a huge challenge, right? It, it, it might be a reasonable. Level, but if it's not, and you say, no, we really wanna address this. And, and staff it, you know, really well, then you would at least add a day truck, if not another twenty-four-hour truck. So, uh, an ambulance, I should say, so my point is, is if you're gonna invest in having two ambulances. Then whether you have them at two stations or one station, the only real consideration is. What your response time goal is and the fiscal cost of a second facility, that's it. Right? So because you, you're, you're sunk costs on the personnel, which will be the lion's share over time. That's already gonna be invested in your second unit. So you, you are really well-aligned to pick either left or right and, and have a confident good system. It's just a matter of the capital costs.
So in the top chart, one station, ten-minute drive time, the red straight line is the single station?
The single unit, yep.
The single unit.
Right.
So that is, in this conversation, basically, that's the ambulance.
Right.
Yep.
So when you go down to the lower one, two stations, that red line is representing two staffed units now?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so it's not just two locations, it's also two staffed units.
Yes, otherwise you won't get to nine minutes, you'll still be at ten. That, that's kind of the point I was trying to make with the optimized. If you only have one station, you're generally gonna perform at that level.
Right, so then the blue line, which is the stress above those two staffed units.
Mm-hmm.
That blue line gets a little closer, but for the most part is still running above the units.
Yes, yeah, it's.
Right, so.
Right.
Yeah, so why is it by doubling the amount of. By doubling the amount of staffed ambulances in this case, why is it we don't get a lot better? What, I mean, I'm sure the data is right, I'm just trying to understand.
Yeah, no, no, the, and, and the reason is, is because now you improved by one minute to nine minutes.
Gotcha, so if we did two units at the same ten-minute drive time, that blue wiggly line would probably be under the red.
Yeah, you'd, you'd be nailing it, right? This, this would be right up here, it would be your staffing. Exactly.
Okay, gotcha, gotcha. So it's not just the improvement of adding a second unit, it's also we're setting our goal higher to be at nine minutes instead of ten.
Right.
Gotcha, okay.
Right, and, and this is, and hopefully I'm not being too redundant, but that's an important element. As you scaffold out how you wanna implement these things over time. Because if you, if you get too far out over your skis and separate out the, the stations. You might have a, a lot slower response time from the staff station. So you'll, you'll wanna decide, am I gonna do this with a single station, am I gonna do this with two stations? And, you know, how quickly can I get, uh, a second staffed resource?
Yep. I believe with that, that model, it's a great graphic, but I mean, that is. Years away.
Yeah.
I mean, having. Two staffed ambulances, twenty-six, seventy-five.
So my, my bigger concern is.
Big bucks.
Yeah, my bigger concern is, can we keep the two ambulances, or we go back to what?
Well, and that's where we're, we have this discussion with board of finance.
People seem to forget, and, and I think some folks at board of finance seem to forget, is the purpose of the purchase of that second ambulance. Was to mitigate lost revenue when the primary ambulance is out of service.
Right.
It's not, it's not to get on the air for other call.
Right, it's just to cover.
Yeah, I mean, you, you blew a transmission in the ambulance, it's gone for a month, that's one month of revenue that's gone, that's what we picked up as the ambulance.
Right.
That's what's primarily for.
Well, and that's why, yeah, um, so.
That's, that's why, that's why we bought it, because you have a catastrophic failure.
Or accident, so maybe one of the discussion points here, one of the scenarios then is, not only is. All this we've talked about, but if we combine the conversation that a. Second, having a second location in town with a paid staff, like we were just talking about. Out of paid EMT slash firefighter, whatever, in this case to Wellington Hill.
Yep.
Also gets you half of a crew on the second ambulance, there's an added advantage there. There's a value added, so all then you need is one volunteer to show up, who's, who's qualified to be on the ambulance.
Right.
And you've, and you've staffed two ambulances now. You know, that's not something that Steve can pull out in his chart, that's, that's our conversation. It gets us basically halfway to staffing the second ambulance.
Right.
And improves our response time.
Yep.
Yep. So, long-term, and I know this would be far off, but I built it out just to, for the sake of the conversation, but. Long-term, I would imagine that you would have a three-person engine. And an ambulance in service, uh, where the three-person engine could even staff that second ambulance, you know, just jump back and forth. Uh, to.
Yep.
Yeah.
Every day.
Yeah. So. Yeah, so, but, but this is something I just wanted to point out from a cost avoidance standpoint. Is if you had a single location, right? Then you could take the ten pieces of apparatus that you have, a lot of them are well past. Uh, NFPA standard of twenty-five years, they want you to mothball them after that. Um, you could, you could just not replace them. Follow your replacement plan on everything that you have today, your timelines still look good. You also have the opportunity to extend those to twenty-five years, if you needed to push them, if the maintenance costs weren't. Uh, bearing you for some reason, like, you know, you had a lemon or something. You have the option to extend that a little bit if you wanted. Um, but you would need to replace one of those that has passed its twenty-five years, so our recommendation. For a single location would be three of your engines, uh, tankers, and then, um. Two ambulances, and then, you know, the forestry unit, you'd have to advise me, you know, whether or not you still needed that or not.
And what, one heavy rescue?
Well, what I did there, what I did there is, um, for that third engine, as long as it had water in a pump. Uh, I, I tried to describe it as a multipurpose unit, so you all could figure out. Right, if you could.
Those engines, squad, 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 rescue bumper, one rescue bumper.
Right.
Yep, wet rescue, as some people like to say.
Yeah. And then that way you can cut down on your capital footprint, your mobile apparatus footprint, and you would cut down on your station. Uh, you know, rebuilds.
So Steve, the inevitable question about this particular conversation.
Mm-hmm.
Is going to be that the. Theoretically, the apparatus that's in town right now, spread amongst the three stations.
Mm-hmm.
Is not just about having equipment in those stations, it's also about a perceived need. Of all those pieces to serve the town, the demand, if you will.
Mm-hmm.
You could argue that's right or wrong, I'm just saying that is sort of the history of it.
Yeah.
So in a. There will be a conversation about, is the recommended number of apparatus. Based on the need of the community, or just based on the fact that it's only one building, and you don't want it to be too big? And so you essentially are economizing.
Yeah, so that comes back to, um. It really comes back to. The conversation about what is your sensitivity on your fiscal constraints, right? If, if you're gonna house all these and have those in those areas, and you haven't. Reduced your capital need, right? You, you may slow roll your investment and upkeep of the, of the facilities. But you haven't, you haven't taken them off of the, the budget sheet, right? So that's kind of the calculus is, you know, do you leave them and let them sit and just, you know, have minimal investment? At best, which is fine, because it's not like you're gonna sell the equipment, right? So, yeah, you could serve your political need for sure, um, and keep those facilities, but what I'm trying to focus on. From our conversation is, where are you gonna invest?
Right, but what, but. It's not to the point. Someone's gonna ask the question, are you saying we have too many trucks in town anyway? Regardless of how many stations they're in, and maybe we do have too many trucks in.
Well, keep going with that, and of what we do have, what needs to, needs, not wants, needs to be replaced. What can sunset and not be replaced?
Right.
So, I guess my, should be under a two, under a two-station solution. What apparatus is needed in the town of Wellington, what can go away or age out and not be replaced? And do you have a comprehensive replacement schedule for the existing apparatus that, that is determined to be needed?
Yes, yes, and this chart really just dials it down, the fact that you split it between two stations is kind of immaterial, right? You just need enough backup, um, you may, you may wanna entertain a second. Uh, a fourth engine, if you will, if you're gonna have two stations, but as far as your ambulances and all that, I think you're fine. Um, it just.
So what you're saying then, Steve, is to answer both my question and Tyler's, is that chart right there is what you feel we need? To cover Wellington, the whole program, regardless of how many buildings it's in. You think that's really all we need, is we need essentially three engines, two ambulances, and maybe a forestry truck?
Well.
Uh, for major apparatus.
A rescue engine, wanted to be a rescue engine.
Well, yes, right, right, so two-engine tanks, a rescue engine, two ambulances. Maybe a forestry unit, and then obviously there'll be service vehicles, but that's not.
Right.
Critical to the conversation, so you're saying that is what Wellington needs to meet its demand, regardless of what number of buildings it's in?
Yes, I, I think that I'm comfortable with that, it's just if you had a second station, I would probably lean towards a fourth engine. So that, you know, as additional crews show up, they have something to grab.
Can you explain, do you explain your, your methodology of not mentioning of the tanker in there, Steve? A tanker?
Not, what do you mean?
No. The tank one, tank one forty-nine.
Yeah, is there, Wellington Hill has a three-thousand gallon tanker, the combination. Yeah, so.
I think it was just the age. I think it was just the age.
It's aged now.
Oh.
It's a two thousand and four, it's twenty-one years old.
Two thousand and four, three seasons.
So, so I'll make this a little bigger. That's not too much, can you see that, okay? So. NFPA kinda uses a fifteen-year threshold for where.
Right.
You can do a refurb on them. Uh, and then twenty-five years is their hard stop, now that's not to say that you, you can't ignore that, right? I, I won't want common sense not prevail, but. But you're also taking on some liability associated with operating, you know, apparatus out of that old, so. The orange line, uh, here is the fifteen years. The, the gray line is the twenty-five years. And the blue columns are what you had stated as your replacement schedule. So you can see all the ones that were above twenty-five years, I made the recommendation, uh, that you, that you. Uh, remove it from the field, and then the only one that had to be replaced, uh, was that. That engine slash squad slash rescue is the one I defined. But everything else could stay on schedule.
So what, so yeah, I just wanna make sure we separate the, separate the aging out. Answer from the, is it required to serve the townspeople answer. You know what I'm saying? Because aging out means we should replace it, unless it's also surplus in function.
Yeah.
Well, let me ask, let me ask you differently, Steve, do you think in the, in the town we need two heavy rescues? Obviously not, because you, you, you wiped it, right, okay, then, thank you.
And so by not recommending the replacement of the tanker, it isn't just that it was aging out, you also don't think we need a three-thousand gallon tanker?
Well. You'll have to, you'll have to correct me on this, the way I read your descriptions, they were engine tankers. On your other apparatus as well, right?
Three thousand gallons on the other two.
So there's, yeah, so there's a variety of water capacities, the largest truck is the one we're talking about, that's a tanker. But it has a fifteen-hundred GPM pump also. It's just, its focus is to be a tanker, it doesn't have as much equipment space and compartments. And then ET one thirteen is two thousand gallons, plus all the compartments and the big pump.
And, yeah, and the dump chutes and stuff.
Right.
I, from my perspective. From my perspective, if you had three engine tankers, then you're in a pretty good position, right?
So you're considering the tanker surplus, that's just what I wanna be clear on.
And the rescue.
Yeah, yeah, I I would say so. I think you're fine, but again, if if it's still functioning and it turns on and it's baffled and and you think it's safe enough to continue to operate. And continue to operate.
The tanker right now, the tank is in the air. It's it's got a split in the tank right now, but again. I don't, I don't wanna spend time talking about if the truck is aging out, what I if. If we determine it's valuable as a service to the community, then we replace it. If we determine it's surplus, then we don't replace.
Yeah, I mean, this gravity doesn't mean, you know, you take. You know, and ET one forty nine, okay, take it out of service, fuck it. The thing, when you get to the point where it's rotted away or it's making sound, we're just not gonna replace it. It comes off, so surplus, whatever, you don't replace it.
Yeah, I just wanna separate that from, oh, it's getting old, right?
Looking at those lines. What year is ET, do you have a ET two forty nine?
Based on those lines, it's not.
That's at twenty forty, according to this. Yeah, but look at the orange line, the fifteen years is now. Truck's not fifteen years old, is it?
The fifteen years basically now, well, the truck is. Uh two thousand twelve.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, two thousand eleven, two thousand twelve. So it's almost fifteen years old.
All right, never mind.
I know, that's our new truck.
And I guess this discussion does answer one of my questions that I asked about about. Like recommendations of like sizes of new, because I feel like some of the sizes that were kicked around of potential new buildings or stations were like, oh, need eight days, oh, you need ten days. I guess he definitely, like maybe cumulative, but definitely not.
Right, if you, if if everyone decides they agree with that chart, they had the red header on it of these are the amount of. Big pieces we need, then that helps you then finally define what the size of the stations. If you're gonna do a two station solution, we're gonna need. Three base here, three base here, whatever.
Even if, even generously with room for the future, that's one, two, three, four, five, six items, seven, eight. Even if you bump it up to ten items, that's five into each location. That's.
Right, and some of those things.
The ambulances, it's out of the forestry, right?
Yeah, shorter vehicles.
Big scale difference than some of the plans that we're thinking around.
Well, so is this chart though suggesting that that's all Willington needs? Two, three tankers, two ambulances that are for you, or to maintain a full level.
That's that is what he's saying. If this is the, this is the equipment you need. So then the little service.
Maintain the service.
For the big trucks.
To maintain our nine minute time. That's what, that's that, that's what's needed in the town.
Okay, all right, I feel like now we're getting somewhere.
Thank you for explaining this chart.
Yeah, absolutely.
All right.
So where does that leave us? What do you want me to focus? Um do you want me to still tease out a one station and a two station? Uh whoever put that example chart together, I'll I'll follow something similar to that. You still want me to do one and two stations or focus only on the two stations?
I think, I think the two, they're seeing, we haven't taken a vote yet, but the advantage to the two station is. We can gain some, we can leverage some gains in response time. We have the ability to future proof for expansion in the town. And we keep shorter distance for volunteers to travel to buildings to get trucks. Right? Is that, that's what we kinda talked about tonight. And right, for both departments, and so that those are three pretty good advantages to a two station solution.
We need to be able to present all of them, though.
I know, I feel like we still need to. At least. Present a one station option in order to say why we think the two station option is better. But if that's what we think, then we need to say why we think it by discussing the single station option.
Times better you're gonna be asking about.
Yeah, so we we need to be able to speak to all the different options fairly unbiasedly as we present them and then present our. With our recommendation to the town. But when we present it, we don't wanna spirit towards anything. We wanna be very. Neutral and say these, these are the options that were presented, and then this is what we decided on being the best. Uh Steve?
Yes.
Can you scroll down? Well, what's what's that position? Hey, what's that?
Oh, I just modeled out a high level estimate for. What a staffed engine and a staffed ambulance would look like.
Man, you don't look like that now. Good Christmas. Was the firefighter paid?
Yeah, and and if you all still want this in there, you wanna have that part of the discussion and you wanna provide me. Hourly rate, want to use, that's perfect. I'll update it super fast.
So basically, it's adding two million dollars a year to what we're.
I don't think that's worth. Like he just had a townwide referendum, seventy five dollars.
No, but it should be. There should be.
That is so true.
But it should be here as a discussion point only to show what our alternatives are. And if we're gonna have a conversation about things like two locations puts us closer to volunteers, here's the alternative. Right, my fear potentially more staff.
What's your, especially if we're talking that we're gonna need a third person up here at station forty nine, Monday through Friday, every day. Or whatever that solution is. But if this is in there, my fear with this is, well, this is what they want. This is what they're gonna go for. Steve, is that a national average, the those numbers you came up with?
No, 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 I I in fact, cuz I didn't have yours. I just had your total spend. I used Tallon's pay rate.
Okay, all right, okay. We like, we need to know that. Then so we're those numbers coming up? No, they're getting now? No, that's not what they're getting now. Uh but that's a, okay.
Send me, if you send me what the hourly rate is of your folks, I'll I'll plug it in, no problem.
We're saying that, oh, this is what Tal, on the other hand, say, oh, this is what Talon spends.
Or you can put our realistic.
To staff their locate, their single location.
Did I lose you?
They seem to be frozen.
Yeah, I think you're back now. Can you hear me okay?
I'm just an audience member. I can hear you, but I can't hear them.
Oh, okay. Thanks for the heads up.
Sure.
We seem to have lost the the other folks, but the three of us are still on here.
Yeah, I don't know how that happened.
We might have to let them back in.
Yeah, well, or we're gonna have to sign back in. It's odd because they're the node, not us, so I don't know.
Yeah, they just texted me and said, hold tight. Can you guys hear me? Not so much. Can you hear me now?
All right, can you hear us?
I can.
They're recording.
All right, all right, well, let's make good use of our time before we get shut off again.
So we're asking about giving him actual.
Yeah, can we do an estimate on hourly wages? I mean, if you know what you, you guys looked at that and said, well, that's not us. You got it, I kinda got an idea what could be us, so.
Yeah, I can send them to him.
Yeah, just just send me what the hourly rates are, please, and estimate it for. Um, you know, a supervisor rank and a. An administrative position. Just tell me, tell me what those are and I'll put them in.
Placehold, a reasonable placeholder.
Yes, sir.
One of the things that that I believe was in the report, you touched on it very briefly in the um in your draft was the issue of whether it's. Uh operationally physically beneficial for a single combined. Fire department or two or maintain the two separate ones. And I guess I was hoping for a little bit more. Neat um on that evaluation of what what your firm actually recommended. Based on the demographics of of Willington and volunteerism, all that happy stuff.
Yeah, I can, I can bolster that that section up. I mean, I won't change the recommendation, but I can certainly certainly build a little bit more of a backstory.
What was your recommendation?
That you all consolidate.
Okay.
Yeah, now whether or not that's two stations or one station is is irrespective of that. But I think like your all's conversation, I think there's a benefit. To having the fluidity of the of the volunteers and equipment, et cetera.
Yeah, no matter where a volunteer lives in town, they would be trained, they'd be part of the same organization, so they can get the closest truck to where they are.
Right. Yep.
Yeah, bar, with the exception of that. I guess I was hoping for for more in-depth analysis on um. The two, the corporations, the two actual individual companies combining into the town of Willington Fire Department, I guess is my. That that's all, I guess I'm, in in the in the RFP, that's what we're, I think we're looking for, was the the pros and cons of both sides of that.
Yeah, I'll build that out a little bit, but but would they? Would you still need to have a have some form of a five oh one C three that's the parent agency or?
No.
Okay. You could have the volunteerism within the the town.
Yeah, so I mean. He did, I I don't like using the media. Cuz the demographic, like Tallon is a combination apartment. It's not a five oh one C three. They're municipal corporate, you know, they're municipal. Fire department underneath the the town. Um do you need to have your five oh C three? I don't know the pros and cons, one way or the other of having it or not. Um.
Holland has a social part. We instilled them the same thing for years. They allowed the volunteers to sort of wind down through their own independent corporation.
So I I guess a more drilled out approach to the pros and cons of a single. Corporate and operational unit is what I I need.
Operational is really what matters, right? Because the. More and more of this is gonna belong to the town. Right? So you could have ten social organizations or zero social organization. The key is that the. Emergency response, operational stuff is a single entity of whatever.
Yeah, so what what could end up, you know, and that's a huge, it's not over, it's not, it's not overcomeable, but theoretically, you have. You know, willing to, everything stays separate. You build these firehouses and and you put a paid person up on Willington. The these. The standard operating procedures and expectations of that paid person could be absolutely different from the expectations and SOPs of the paid staff willing to want.
Yeah.
So you you need to have. Yeah, it is. Yeah, it's just, it's just sloppy as hell. Um so that's just one small example of why you wanna look at a combined. Um firefighting force under one umbrella, under one fire chief or whoever it is. Not not, and you know, in in that model. You know, you have every fire department in Will, or both fire departments, you have two chiefs, you have two, you have four assistant chiefs or six assistant chiefs, you have five captains. Twelve lieutenants, I mean, the number there is, two presidents, two vices, two secretaries, two treasurers, two separate board directors. You could alleviate that. Knock down your numbers and leave all those other people for other things that are important too. So that's all.
True. That's like from a building standpoint too, would you, you don't need two distinct training spaces, two distinct, like you could share. Physical spaces instead of having them.
And again, I'm not, I'm not.
Not that there's not sharing now, but like instead of like, oh, you need, you know. Yeah.
I think, I think the the townspeople are expecting, I, well, I think this group is expecting a a pros and cons analysis of. Of, you know. Both models, the existing model versus the combined model. In in its totality.
Yes.
Sure.
I I guess. I, this is probably a real monkey wrench to throw in here, but just for the sake of discussion, because I think we made a lot of progress tonight is. If. If the plan going forward becomes and it. Let's just say we're talking about the two station plan at this point. The the Willington Hill solution is somewhere here on Old Farms Road. Um, the River Road solution, I'm I'm talking about Willington geographically. And the River Road solution. Was more optimal at the station thirteen location. Based on the GIS data and all that. Since that station needs a com- potentially a complete rebuild. Is there any value to looking at a new location that would be even more optimal? Like closer to the intersection where Dollar General is.
Right.
Is there a piece of property available? If you're gonna build a new building anywhere, do we at least? Take a little bit of time to explore, is there a location to put the new building? And the advantage of that would be is. It would be a little closer to the south end because essentially this direction we're heading towards us. Is closing the south end station. So if you're gonna close the station, maybe we wanna move. Station thirteen a little closer to, since we know the DG location wasn't optimal.
Due diligence, number one and number two, it's just to take somebody to determine what is available for for land.
Right, so like example, next to Diane Becker's house, if the old piece that was Tom Snyder's house.
Yep.
And the um antique store in the back that's going through distress right now.
Yep.
Maybe that could be the location of the new new fire station.
That's also the flood zone, right?
I think so.
I think it's pretty, it's pretty high up, and I think if you built it, if you grade, set it at the right height, I think it'd be okay. If you look at the floodplain maps are here. If you look at the, the flood plain maps are here.
The, right, like all of those models are built on the two existing locations or two totally new locations, but yeah, so you're asking for like, what if you.
Essentially a hybrid.
Existing Willington Hill location and then a new second location.
But then it becomes cost. Well, you're already building, you're already building the new station anyway.
Right, but then you have to buy property.
But, but buying property is a factor of maybe a couple hundred thousand dollars. When you're talking about millions and millions for a building, it's only, you know.
Yeah, yeah.
A five percent issue or a four percent issue or something.
I, I think it's. No, there's, yeah, in doing that, there's, I know Ron's line here, cause I've known, known him for so long, there's logistics. With the existing property that we have, you know, we own.
Yes.
Penn acres back there with the cell tower on it, so there's, we have to talk about, if, if there was a relocation, how we would parse that.
So the, the Willington Fire Department or the downstairs club keeps.
Right, that's what they used to call them, I'll take you there. Well, that's what they used to call them in the fire department. Right, yeah, but the point is, you don't wanna just, hey, we're gonna sell, sell our, we don't wanna do that, cause there's income from that.
Right.
It offsets payroll, you know, so we don't wanna chuck that.
Or the taxpayers say, we'll build a new station. Uh, we'll do something in Willington Hill and we wanna collect up all the others as part of the deal. And convert that into something to help pay the taxpayers back part of it, you negotiate out what that works out to be.
Yeah, maybe, maybe it's always interesting. I think, yeah, I think you do your due diligence and see what's, what's around and.
I, I, the biggest reason that got me thinking about that was if the development ever takes off economically in the southwest corner. You know, is that a more future-proof location? Sorry, Steve, that we left you off on that conversation.
No, it's good, it's a good conversation, it, it.
So while, while he's there, while Steve's here, what else do we wanna? Where are we at on our?
I, I think, I think where we're at is Steve is gonna dial in on just two. Two things, which is the two station and a single station to compare. So that we can show the two options to the taxpayers.
That's great, yeah, so.
And. A lot of the stuff is, a lot of the stuff is cleanup stuff that he already knows about. He's, uh, well, Steve, are you maybe gonna add another line or two to the conversation about the consolidating the operation?
Yeah, yeah, I'll, I'll build that out more robustly, give a little bit of a backstory.
Yeah. And the salary, we're gonna update with Willington one's information.
Yep, send me that, no problem.
And then obviously, there were little cleanup things about like township and Willington Hills and stuff, which that'll get cleaned up.
Yeah, it's already done.
Um, there was a lot in there, though, there was a lot of. Analysis and stuff, uh, that, it seems like. There was some analysis that some of you felt hadn't been done.
And then Steve, would it make sense, once you're down to fleshing out those two options? Would it be, would it make sense to have a page that's just a comparator of those two options?
Yeah, I'll make a, yeah. Yeah, I'll make like a one pager. That gets right to the point, pros, cons, has the two cost centers and the benefits, just have a, have a one pager that you can shop.
Yeah, there you go. All right. Anything else?
Not from my perspective.
Okay, well, Steve, I appreciate your time, thanks for joining us tonight, uh, I'm sure we, we will be in contact with you again.
Alrighty, thank you very much.
So communication's going okay between us and everything, everything's good?
Yeah, everything, everything's good, um, I think we're good, you guys got some good feedback, I'm hopefully, you know, hoping that. Our discussion and I probably answered a good fair amount of them, but I'll go through the rest of it and make sure, then address the things that we talked about tonight.
All right, Steve, about how long do you think you need to? Have it basically ready to come back?
Um, like a week.
Great.
Yeah, it's not, it's not a heavy lift from here, um, I, I, I did a lot of it this afternoon already, so. Um, soon as you send me those salaries and stuff, I'll, I'll, with the hourly rates, I'll update that real quick, uh, and then build out the rest, yeah.
All right. Well, thank you very much, thanks for attending tonight.
Absolutely, you guys have a great night.
All right.
What else on the agenda, boss?
Well, that's it, I mean, good stuff, so everybody's cool with everything that happened and. If not, let us know, so this correspondence, uh, I didn't hear any, or didn't get any. Uh, present to speak, anybody online that would like to. Say anything. I don't see any hands raised. Uh, next meeting is scheduled for twenty three, twenty three, October twenty third, twenty twenty five.
Same time, same place.
Yeah, they'll, if he gets back to us in a week, whatever he sends, we'll get it out to the team and, uh. We'll just go over it again, say all your comments, so we got them right here, so Ralph and I shall be putting it together. All right, so, uh, motion adjourned.
So moved.
All in favor? Meeting adjourned at eight oh eight. Too far right.